Good evening and welcome to the Putnam Valley Board of Education Business/Work Session of January 10th, 2019. I have to get back and I have to get into the habit of saying 2019. Please stand and join me as we salute our flag. It's over there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay? And I'd just like to announce that the Board of Education convened our meeting at 6:00 PM this evening and went directly into executive session for the purposes of related to the employment history of particular persons or corporations or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, dismissal, suspension, dismissal, or removal of particular persons. And we are now resuming our business meeting. The first announcement I'd like to make is to approve the minutes of the -- I can't find what meeting it is.
November 19th.
December 3rd and November 19th, 2018.
Thank you, because that's not showing me that.
Yes.
Yeah, here we go. Opening very slowly.
Yep.
To approve the November 19th and December 13th, 2018, meeting minutes of the Board of Education.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now moving right to -- I'm sorry, it's a little slow getting started, everybody. Moving on to presentations.
Yes, this evening we have Kristin O'Donnell, O'Connell, and Joe DiMarco from the Prevention Council of Putnam County. And they're going to talk about the survey results that occurred this year based on this biannual survey that we do in the district and across the county and actually it's a national survey with excellent validity and reliability. It's been happening for many, many years. And this survey gives us information about how our district students are doing in terms of the areas that are right now very, very serious in our society, issues of drug and alcohol use and abuse, but a larger picture too of the general well-being of adolescents in our community and then compared to the county and other communities throughout the nation. And with that, I'd like to introduce Kristin O'Connell and Joe DiMarco.
I'm sorry, before we go on, these microphones are not coming through here for sure, right? Are you getting it?
Yes.
Just want to make sure that people can hear.
It's two different shades.
Is this good? Can everyone hear me okay?
It's perfect.
Okay, great. So, thank you, Dr. Wills and the Board of Education. I'm Kristin O'Connell.
Joe DiMarco is out.
And we're -- we both are the co-chairs of the Putnam Communities That Care Coalition and I'm also the director at the Prevention Council.
And I, in my real job, am the Deputy Commissioner of Mental Health Social Services in the Youth Bureau of Putnam County.
So, as Dr. Wills said, we're going to talk briefly about the Prevention Needs Assessment Survey, or PNA as we'll call it, that was conducted in the spring of 2018. The survey was done in all districts in Putnam and we're going to specifically talk about the Putnam Valley results. We've been doing the survey for 10 years, so we have 10 years of longitudinal data, which is really great, so you'll see that throughout the slides. And it really was designed to assess adolescent risky behavior and substance use and prevalence, as well as risk and protective factors as they relate to those behaviors. So, the first slide here really is just giving a summary. It was done in grades 8, 10, and 12. There are a total of 426 students that in those grades and of that 249 completed the survey. And it was conducted in classes that all students take and there's passive consent, which means that notification is sent to parents and it's up to parents to opt out their child, although the child can also opt out at the time of the survey. And just a little bit about the validity and confidentiality, Dr. Wills touched on this. The students can skip questions, they don't have to complete the entire survey. They're assured throughout the instructions that it's voluntary, anonymous, and confidential. And because that's stressed throughout the survey administration, most of the reasons the students may exaggerate or deny behaviors, those surveys are eliminated. However, there are several checks built into the survey in the data analysis to minimize the impact of students who were either not honest in their responses. So, what that means is there's several questions built in that are almost like trick questions, questions asked in different ways, and if they're answered inconsistently, there's a fake drug in the survey, if that's answered that they use that drug, then their entire survey is eliminated. So, we feel confident in the results.
Great. The first behavior that we look at is past 30-day use of alcohol. And if you look at the trends that you have, you have 8th grade, which goes back to 2008 up until current, as well as 10th grade and 12th grade. And then the chart to the right, which is Putnam County, and we do that for an analysis, but it's important to realize that the analysis of Putnam County is 8th, 10th, and 12th graders. Please don't attempt to measure a grade versus the average.
Okay.
Because you will not be statistically correct. And what we look at are the trends. And if you look at the 8th graders in 2018, 10% have had two or more drinks in the past 30 days. And for 10th graders, it's about 38%. And for 12th graders, it's roughly 43, 44%. Keep in mind that 10th graders in 2016, which at that time was close to 50%, are now 12th graders and that number actually has gone down. We do look for trends that go down gradually. We, in a statistical world, plus or minus 3% to 5% really is nothing significant, but if we see a 10% drop, which we have in some of the data, it concerns us because then there's some sort of anomaly going on. We have learned through the years that certain grades have young people who are very interesting and they have some spikes both ways. And so, we try and identify what those spikes are caused by. But as you can see, up until 2018 for your 12th graders, the numbers were in the 50% and it's down below into the 44% and we're really excited and that's a great trend. And we hope that with the 10th graders who took it, that that will continue along with those positive trends.
Joe, can I ask one question? The Putnam County, I mean, you might have understood, I might have been zoning out for a second. The Putnam County are everyone?
Correct.
So, the 8th grade numbers are in there with the 12th?
Correct, we will bring them down.
Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to add one thing. Throughout the presentation, we're going to focus on past 30-day use. The survey measures lifetime use as well, but for the purposes of looking at the presentation, we're going to focus on that because the measure who have used in the last 30 days prior to taking the survey is a more sensitive indicator of their use than lifetime use, which may just mean they've tried it once or twice. So, that's why we're focusing on past 30 days.
The next behavior we look at is tobacco use. And this is really, to date, has been very positive in Putnam Valley. The numbers are in the low teens for previous years. If you look at the current year, 2018, they're all below 10%, which really is a great statistic. I think that the school district, the county, and the state in previous years has done a great job with educating the community kids and adults on the use of tobacco and the negative effects on their health. We are starting to see already an increase in tobacco use. And we're going to talk about that in another slide. There's a relationship between vaping e-cigarettes and what's going on with tobacco products. But to date, it really is nice that we have about 8%, 7% of 12th graders who smoke and or use tobacco products.
I was going to say, this question is the general tobacco products, not smoke, vape?
Those are separate questions, which we'll share with you.
Got it, thank you.
So, we're really positive and we hope to continue to educate people on that.
This does not include vaping, or does it?
This is next.
This is separate from vaping products.
Thank you.
So, now we'll talk about vaping a little bit. This was the first time that the survey included vaping questions, so we don't have comparative numbers as we did. Although, I will say back to tobacco really fast. If you look at 12th graders, the baseline data from 2008 in the light blue compared to the brownish-orangey, depending on how you look at the color, in 2018, you're seeing the significant decline from baseline. So, I just wanted to point that out. That's a huge accomplishment and like Joe said, we like to see the numbers go down gradually because we feel they're more likely to stay that way. So, just wanted to point that out. But back to E-SIGs. So, we have this broken up for Putnam Valley. In blue, the county, I'm seeing it differently on my screen, but it's interesting. Anyway, and then the national trends, which were from 2017. So, as you can see here, Putnam Valley for the 8th graders are a little bit higher, are about, just about equal to the national average. For 10th graders, they're about the same, and then for 12th, it's actually a little bit lower. And just for everybody's purposes of what you may or may know about vaping, I mean, it's an entirely separate presentation, but I will just say that we know it's when you use an E-SIG, which is a device where you're able to inhale a vapor, and it does not produce a smoke. So, we know that there are many different devices that have batteries and cartridges and the Juul and all those things that you're confiscating in the school and that you might be seeing, you know, on the internet. So, that's what we're referring to here. And I just want to take a moment to show you the issue in Putnam compared to the national average, which is the Monitoring the Future Survey, which is also compared to our data.
This is county-wide.
Yes.
Not Putnam Valley specific, but county-wide because with what goes on in the county, it normally spreads town to town to town. No longer are any of the communities a silo of themselves.
Right.
So, this at some point will be in Putnam Valley as well.
Right. So, clearly, as you can see, the past 30-day use in Putnam is double the national average. So, it's very alarming and very concerning. And we met with Dr. Wills and her administrative team and we're talking about it and what more can we do? And were you going to mention a couple of things that we're doing?
We also are trying to do some educational programs, not only in the county but in Putnam Valley. But specifically, we're working with the Putnam County Health Department, who are our partners in the CTC. And we are having them work with our local pediatricians in Putnam County and we're going to have a symposium with them on trying to have them partner and educate young people and their parents on what goes on with vaping. They are tobacco products. And marketing by the big companies, they've done such a great job in marketing these things to adults and young people. And when we have tiny focus groups with young people, they sometimes don't even think that there's tobacco in it, they think it's flavored water. So, there really is a misunderstanding. The second initiative that we have going on, and we're really excited about it because it is a grassroots initiative and part of the Putnam Valley CTC is involved, we call it our pizza box education. And we are working with local pizza parlors for every Friday to have them put a sticker on the inside of a pizza box. We pick Fridays as a somewhat consistent message. And in there, we have three different types of messages and a lot of the pizza places want to be partners and they're putting it in there as part of community give-back time. And it's an opportunity for parents to have a discussion then with their child based on these comments or questions that we put in there because education and awareness is really the first step to culture change and we have to do something. Vape products are just not about tobacco. There are THC liquids that are being sold via the internet. In the county, recently, in December or January, I forget the date, the county executive signed into Bill T-21, which is Tobacco 21, Raising the Age. And really, the crux of that was more so to address the vaping products than it was for tobacco, though it is a good idea. And so, that's one of the initiatives that we're doing county-wide in addition to those other things I had mentioned.
And we also create a vaping PSA that's in some local movie theaters and can be easily placed on your website and in your social media, so I can forward that to you as well. And like Joe said, the pizza box stickers, they are really conversation starters to have conversations with parents and their children. And they have the answers to the questions or actually you can go right to our website and get that information. So, if the parents aren't really sure what the answers are, they can get that and then educate their kids. So, I just wanted to mention that.
So, what are the questions? Or examples of the questions?
One of them is about T-21. It says, or do you know what Tobacco 21 is? Have you heard of T-21? Which would start a conversation about that. And one's about vaping, like the facts about vaping, because many young people think that they're just vaping water. They don't realize the chemicals. So, there's questions about that. And then if you go, the link tells you to go to our website and we have a blog that explains in detail the facts.
And one of the things, I apologize, one of the important things about tobacco products, and we could have this debate forever whether it is one of the gateway drugs or crosswalk drugs. You know, people get stuck on terminology. And not everyone who uses tobacco products becomes an addict or develops an addiction, I should say. But 80% of people who are in recovery for an addiction, smoke or use tobacco products. And so, there is a crosswalk there somewhere. There is some science and though we don't have any data that confirms what I'm saying, it just makes logical sense to me that 80% are using tobacco products and have an addiction to be crosswalk.
Unfortunately, right now, the only thing that we do know is that short-term studies have shown that within six to nine months of an adolescent beginning to vape, they turn to start using traditional tobacco products. One of the reasons that was concluded, because we're wondering why they're doing that, and it's really just because maybe they ran out of their cartridge or their vape device isn't working or they don't have it on them and somebody there, you know, a peer, has a cigarette and offers them a cigarette and they realize it does the same thing as the vape does. So, that's what we're seeing right now, which is a huge issue because as Joe mentioned earlier, we've spent decades trying to get the tobacco numbers as low as they are today and now the vape industry is going to, you know, bring them back the other direction. So, okay, we're going to move on to, this is a perfect way to segue into marijuana.
I love saying every segue is a symphony. Past 30-day use of marijuana. As you can see, roughly 30% of 12th graders have used, one-third have used marijuana in the past 30 days. For 10th graders, it's roughly 17%. And it's a small amount for the 8th graders, which is good. The previous year was really pretty high for that 10th grade class, excuse me, for that 8th grade class in 2016. And that's something that the school, when we would have discussions is, was there something interesting about that grade? Was that a group of high-spirited kids, you know, fun-loving, overboard, stuff that we would want to understand why it was so high? The problem that's going on currently for young kids specifically is the mixed message and the confusion that they've gotten through the years with marijuana. In our focus groups with young people, they're confused about, how can it be bad for you if it's prescribed as a medication? And one of the things that we talk about, and we are not opposed to medical marijuana for individuals in the classifications that have been outlined and defined, they actually are very positive for people with late-stage age, ALS, and the other categories. But the brain development of a young person, depending on the child and whether it's a boy or girl, anywhere from 22 to up to 25 years of age, and any chemical that we put in our brain or in our systems can potentially affect the brain chemistry. And there are studies being done with older kids with psychotic breaks and other mental illnesses. And I think young people are confused about whether this is bad for them or not. And I think we need to educate them. And it's going to get a little bit more complicated as New York State moves closer to legalization for recreational marijuana. And I think we can learn a lot from the eight other states that have engaged in this, specifically Colorado. And we're putting together some other task force to try and do some education and prevention with school districts and young people and their families on this.
So, binge drinking. I just want to point out so everyone understands that the question in the survey says, think back over the past two weeks. How many times have you had five or more alcoholic drinks in a row? So, that's the question that the students answer on here. So, if you see, for 8th grade in 2016, it was 0%, which is why we don't see anything there. And then for 10th graders, we saw a nice decline from 2016 and from baseline data back in 2008, as you can see, we were on the decline. As well as 12th graders, we were at nearly 40% when we started surveying and now we're hovering, you know, 27%. So, we are seeing a decline. However, this is the riskiest kind of drinking that we know of. This is drinking to get drunk as fast as possible, which can, you know, have a lot of dangerous health consequences. So, it's still an issue, however, on a positive note, it is going in the right direction. I think sometimes people forget about alcohol. We talk about vaping, we talk about marijuana and opioids and heroin and it's like, wait a second, we still have a huge issue with binge drinking and past 30-day use of alcohol. So, we try to remind everybody.
And as part of what we do county-wide, through the council and in partnership with our sheriff's department, we do compliance checks. And we work with the sheriff's department and a person under the age of 21 goes in and attempts to purchase beer at a convenience store, liquor store. And we have a pretty good percentage of people who comply with the law and we'll continue to do that through the years. One of the things that we've talked about with vaping products and certainly we would with alcohol, if you know of a establishment that just blatantly has disregard for young people and the law, let someone know and we'll make sure that we can stop in there and do a compliance check. We've already gotten two tips on places with vaping products that have sold to kids as young as 14 years of age. And when a parent went in, the vaping owner of the establishment said, we don't care, this is about us making money. And so, we really want to do the best we can in Putnam and we have great partners in the sheriff's department.
And you just go, I don't want to go back to vaping for a second because that is a whole other presentation. But is there any, in terms of the education, you know, I drive around and I see some of the names of shops, there's one in Rockland County called Dorf Vapor. You might as well just target Star Wars-loving 14-year-olds. Is there some, you know, thought of legislation about some of these organizations and naming or, you know, licensing?
I think that has to do with the local, like, town.
Town ordinance, yeah.
Right, I think, yeah.
We had had a conversation at the county level with the task force that was looking at some of the things we could do and the ordinance needs to be driven by the local towns. One of the things that we had talked about was that they shouldn't be near a school, they shouldn't be near a library, they shouldn't be near a daycare center. We're not anti-business, we're trying to just be, let's keep young people healthy. And if they walk into the library and it's a, in a community where it's a walking on a block or on a street and there's a vape store next door, they become immune or numb to the vaping product because they're seeing it every day or every time they go in the library. And so, I think the local governments need to look at their zoning.
And Putnam Valley has a moratorium because they had shops looking to open vape shops. And so, they have a moratorium.
They just renewed the moratorium again.
Right. While they look into it, so.
So, this is past 30-day use of overall drugs. It's broken out by amphetamine sedatives, other narcotics, and inhalants. So, these numbers are very low, which is, we like to see that, and downward trending as you can see. And the important thing to note here is that whether it's an amphetamine sedative or narcotic, the questions asked, have they used that drug that's not, when not prescribed to them? Because we know that adolescents may have a prescription for Adderall, Ortolan, or may have had dental work or surgery and be prescribed Oxycontin or Percocet. So, I want to be very clear that if they've answered the question, they understand that it's not prescribed to them.
And the important thing to understand about this, and county-wide, the statistics are basically within 3% to 5% of each other. We do not see the abuse of amphetamines and sedatives and other narcotics, inhalants, until they're actually out of high school. And the 18, 19 to 28 is such an explosion that, based on conversations we have, we think it's a multitude of storms coming together. One, they're in college and they're on their own and they're not beholden to anyone but themselves. They're then exposed to other young people who may have had other experiences other than they've had. The availability, the additional resources that they get once they're a little bit older as well. And so, just be mindful though, this is low and would not want this to be any one of our children because they're very serious with addictive qualities. It does start to explode as they get a little bit older. So, then we just talk about perception of risk and we'll just, we'll kind of fly through this. And we ask the kids each year their perception of risk of alcohol and we want these numbers to be higher. And as you can see, they're all in the 80-plus percent, some are 90. There is obviously 10% in some categories that don't think that prescription drugs or alcohol or tobacco are not. And close to 35% feel marijuana is not a risky drug. And I think that's part of the mixed message that they get. And then we talk about parental disapproval, which I think is really one of the things that we have the ability, all of us in a community, to work on. And part of this, and what's real important is that this is the child's perception that their parents, and as you can see, the majority of them feel that each of those are, their parents don't approve of those behaviors. There is 10% or 9% who feel their parents would be okay with marijuana. Tobacco is high and prescription drugs are high. And again, the message of, is it bad for you or not?
I just wanted to point out something interesting from the earlier slide. As you can see, marijuana perception of risk of harm was on the decline, which was going in the wrong direction until 2018, where we see it go back from just under 50% to like 62%. And then on this slide, the next slide Joe was just on, we see marijuana way up for parental, perception of parental disapproval. So, perhaps there's a message, consistent message, that young people are hearing from their parents that's then really resonating with them and they're not, they're now starting to realize that this is harmful. So, I just want to, we look at this and we try to figure out, maybe sometimes we see some links and we see this as potentially something that's working.
Right. They're very positive.
Yeah, great. And, no, sorry, I digress sometimes.
And this is their peer perception of disapproval. And as you can see that, you know, marijuana, again, is the lowest out of all of those behaviors that they feel their peers disapprove of. Prescription drugs is high. Tobacco is at 90%. Alcohol is about 88%, which I think is so interesting that their perception of their friends is that high for alcohol, which is really a good thing.
Absolutely.
And I just wanted to point out, there's a lot of research around young people who associate with peers are more likely to engage in substance use. So, even, it's found to be a very strong predictor that even if they come from a well-managed family, the research still shows, and they don't have other risk factors, that spending time with friends and peers that use drugs, they're more likely, increases their likelihood to develop even a problem later on in life. So, this is why we bring this up.
You know, the other thing that we talk about and we try and get out from an educational standpoint is, you know, peer pressure is really not out there anymore. No one is saying to their friend, either get high with me or get drunk with me or I'm not going to be your friend, you're a loser. It's really more about peer presence. And if you go to a party and groups of people are engaging in whatever behavior they're in, being accepted sometimes leads to negative behavior because being accepted at times is more important than the behavior itself. And so, we try and talk with parents and children about peer presence and who are the groups that they're affiliating themselves with or they're engaging with on their fun activities and what that means for that child. And so, please keep that in mind, it's about peer presence.
And you, these are all the 8th, 10th, and 12th graders together?
Yes.
Yes.
You've broken them out by the topics?
Right.
Yes.
So, risk factors, I just want to point out why we talk about this. And there are And there are characteristics for schools, community, and family environments, as well as for their peers and peer groups that are known to predict the likelihood of substance use, delinquency, teen pregnancy, school dropout among, and violent behavior. So that's why we're going to talk about some risk factors. And then on the next slide, we talk about protective factors, which research has shown exert a positive influence and a buffer against those negative influences and risk factors that I just mentioned, which would reduce the likelihood that adolescents engage in substance use. So the premise is basically that in order to promote positive youth development and prevent these problem behaviors, it's necessary to address the problems, the factors that predict the problem. So we're going to now talk about three risk factors that we've been looking at for the past ten years.
Laws and norms favorable towards risky behaviors. You know, the greatest example that we used to use previous years was that if you had a small amount of marijuana on you, it was a violation and you paid a fine, but if you stole the shopping cart from ShopRite, it was a misdemeanor. And so the laws and norms weren't always in sync with what the needs were. And so people use those at times as excuses to engage in risky behaviors. The availability of drugs, we're seeing downward trends, and again, I think our law enforcement throughout the county and our district attorney's office have really done a good job with attempting to stem the tide of the availability of drugs in the community. But also, I think, a lot of groups have done a great job with medication take-back days, getting things out of the medicine cabinet, getting them off of the streets, and I think everybody should get some recognition for that. This is really one of my favorites to talk about is parental attitudes favorable towards any social behavior. And it's almost sixty percent, it's fifty-eight percent. Perception is reality. And if, I don't know very many parents who have said to their child, "I want you to go to school today and bully somebody," or "I want you to go to school today and get high and go sneak out back, and if you can, rob a car." The message that kids often hear are unintentional messages. And I think we need to just make people aware of, they are models for their children. Parents are role models, whether they want to be or not. And that the way they speak to their children, or whether adults speak to a child, aunts, uncles, grandparents, even important people in their life who are in the school district, a teacher, a nurse, someone in the main office, language is important. And what they hear might be different than the message we send them, and so we really need to be aware of that. If sixty percent of kids feel their parents have a favorable attitude towards any social behavior, we're going to lose the battle of their behaviors.
So when parents, siblings, and other family members praise and encourage things that are done by their child, their child's less likely to engage in problem behaviors, substance use. So we, and then again, for things they do in the community, if they're praised for that, again, lowering their risk. And finally, when they're recognized and rewarded at school, they're less likely to be involved in problem behavior. So we pulled out the family reward, community, and school rewards pro-social involvement. And as you can see, we're about, we're pretty much around where we started, but still about sixty percent for family rewards, community rewards, and a little, just below sixty percent for school rewards. And I know that we've sat with Fran and her team, and we've looked at, you know, what can we do to get them even higher than they are? So it's really good, you know, they've done, everyone's done a great job, you know, keep doing what we're doing. And just so we're clear, an increase on this chart is good. I have a little note on that, just so everyone's clear.
And one of the things that, when we met with Fran and her team, we talked about young people, and when we do something for them as a reward or a recognition, and it becomes the standard, then it's an expectation, and no longer is it a reward. And so we need to be more creative at times and put little twists and turns and reinvent ourselves the way we do that. And that goes for everyone. And so I think that the school's done a great job, the community does a great job, and we're seeing parents. And part of that was, and it just is basically including your kid in conversations about vacation. You know, instead of saying, "Pack your bags, we're going to Florida," having a conversation around the dinner table, "Hey, where would everybody like to go?" And they feel like they're part of the decision-making, which gives them a little bit more of self-esteem and part of the family.
And then any gambling in the past year, we measure, there's like ten different types of gambling that are measured, and gambling is a risky behavior and has a correlation with substance use. So we have at the prevention council, small, small mini grant from the state to do some problem gambling prevention, and we've been doing that since 2008. And we are pleased with these numbers. They are on a downward trend in the right direction. So we do look at gambling, and like I said, it is a risky, a risky behavior that can lead to other issues like alcohol and substance use. Okay. Do you want me to do this one?
Yeah.
Sure. So the age of onset, that's really, research demonstrates that the later someone begins to use the substance, the less likely they are to develop an addiction or an issue later on in life. So that's called the age of onset. So it's good prevention when we see the age of onset is increasing. So in Putnam Valley, we have seen that it's gotten later for alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, and the full report that we provided can give you the breakdown for grade and by gender as well.
And then the last slide that we have for you is alcohol and driving past thirty days. And you have less than one percent of students, grade eight, ten, and twelve, reported they have driven after drinking. That four, oh, point, oh, point four percent is actually a little bit higher, because only 12th graders really drive, the 10th graders get to ride. The bottom bullet is the one that really just sits wrong with me all the time. We have eighteen percent of students that have gotten in the car with someone who's been drinking alcohol. And when we have these focus groups through our Sydney program, which is with some of the larger schools, we get a little bit more information. And the seniors tell us, you know, "Why would you get in the car with someone who is drinking?" And sometimes they say to us, "Well, they were a little bit more sober than I was." And then the other thing that we have gotten information on, and we need to talk about this, because we are going to have a tragedy. We're not sure of the percentage of those twenty percent of the 10th graders, how many of them are their parents or older siblings that have picked them up and have had a drink or two or three. I don't know of very many children in eighth and 10th grade who have the fortitude to say to a parent or an older sibling, "I'm not getting in the car with you," or, you know, "Let me drive." I would hope some seniors would be able to say that, "Hey, Mom or Dad," or to their older brother or whomever, "Hey, let me drive, you know, I don't want to get in the car with you when you drink." But it's really a message that if that is what's taking place, it sets a bad precedent for young people. Because if the person responsible to get me can do this, then why can't I do it when it's my turn?
So I think that, we just wanted to mention again, thank Dr. Wells and the board. Everything that we do with the Putnam Valley community that care is data-driven, so we take this very seriously. We measure, you know, we use this data, we get the results, and then we have a plan and implement strategies to directly address these issues. So it's really, I just wanted to point that out, that whether it's a pizza box sticker or a public service announcement, or whatever it is, there's a reason why we're doing what we're doing, and we're going to keep doing what we're doing. So, thank you.
And our meetings are open.
Yes, that's true.
Everyone is welcome. You, if you want to be on the mailing list, but can't make the meetings, but at some point can contribute something, you're more than welcome to be with us. And I as well want to thank Fran and all of the staff at the school, the Board of Education, and a lot of the community members who give of themselves to be on the CTC, and it really makes it a great community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm really appreciative of the way this county participates with the schools, and it's one of the examples of the community connection that we feel very, very good about, and that does form a protective factor for our students, because we have resources. Putnam County is remarkable for the health resources, the mental health resources, other resources that are provided that we can go to. And I think that's one of the key and unique qualities of this county, and the work of the CTC has been really helpful over the years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. It's budget time.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, thank you very much.
I would run.
Where are you going? I said, where are you going?
So, you know, it's fitting that, I think that this report comes after the report on drug and alcohol prevention, because, you know, again, we're talking about a whole, the whole child, child first and foremost, and one of the major attributes of a good school setting and school-community relationship are groups like this one, like the Prevention Task Force. So we're very fortunate to have that opportunity. So looking at the budget coming up for 1920, I talk about it, and our administrative team has been talking about it, as sustaining and strengthening the Putnam Valley mission. I'd like to call attention to another theme that we have, the aspire theme, which comes at our high school, particularly with the words accountability, safety, perseverance, integrity, responsibility, and empathy. And each year, there is a competition in the student body for artwork to best represent this theme. And this year, we had a celebration of the winner of this award, and that's Caitlin Cohen, and her artwork is on the cover of the handbook that is given to all of these students. And if you look closely at this, I think what's really remarkable, this whole painting, or this painting that was created and is now in print form, this is a map, this is made up of maps, pieces, slices of maps. And it gives the sense of the variety, the diversity, the differences in nationally and out, you know, in our nation, yet all together in this American eagle. So it's a very symbolic work, and a very powerful one, and the celebration was really wonderful. But, you know, it's, it says a lot about what we're trying to do in our school district. So I call this, in a way, it's to be continued. That's the budget, that message in a sense, that we're trying to, you know, continue the sound fiscal and educational focus, and we're continuing the work that we're doing. There aren't going to be, you know, there aren't major initiatives. We have had major initiatives that we're implementing, and there is some exploration we're doing in some areas, but it's something where we're trying to build those relationships, promote student voice, strengthen and sustain, and do some exploration we needed in areas where we may need to grow. For example, there are new mental health regulations, a framework that the state has published, and we're doing an exploration of that and how we are meeting the needs of our students. But mainly, we are carrying on. So in a K-12 overview of current initiatives that we're continuing, and these will be included in the budget, they are included this year, they will be included. Our special education program, continuing to support the evolving program, and it evolves because we meet the changing needs of our students. So we're always looking at our special education program to see where we have to increase, where we can move resources, move them around, and make sure that all our students' needs are met. Innovative teaching, professional development. Dr. Luft started a program this year for teachers in focusing on innovation in order to engage students, that will continue. Curriculum alignment with the state standards, K-12. We've been very, we've seen great success with the work we're doing in aligning our curriculum with the standards and in ensuring that all of our students have the opportunity to reach the high expectations that are included in those standards. The sustainability team, theme and projects, K-12. STEM and science innovation, K-12. Social-emotional learning, ruler, character, and mental health education. Music, the performing arts, the visual arts, clubs at the elementary school, middle and high school. Overall, we have one hundred and twenty-five activities across the board, K-12, that, and these are annually adjusted, looked at every year to see whether they are meeting the needs of the students involved, how many students are enrolled, you know, what value they bring to the school district. The athletic program, we have forty-six teams in our athletic program, and we have seven mergers. So for a small district, we provide a great deal in terms of the physical education as well. And the clubs are in all areas, so we're building on the interests of our students and their affinity, so that they can choose an area to grow in for their future. I just, a few pictures that I've included, because these things have a life of their own. This, the ruler program, for example, emotions matter, all of the aspects of learning about your emotions and feelings. We are ahead of the state framework. We have, in other words, many of the areas that are included in the state framework, we've already been moving toward. That's why I'm saying that much of the work we're doing is to be continued. Here's a photo I'd like to show you. This is our athletic team this year, just recent awards for our boys and girls teams. They're both very, very successful this year. These are trophies that were received by our girls team and our boys team at tournaments, most recently, top, the top teams. So lots of success there. High school, we have the International Baccalaureate Program Implementation Year next year, should our authorization be finalized this year. We're waiting for the authorization this spring. This is enormous undertaking, and we have, I have been so impressed, and I've sent the board some of the communications on this, so you can see the way our teachers have become invested, and the way they see themselves as entering into something that's very valuable to them. And they've led their own faculty groups in the different areas of IB and learning about the student profile. And we're going to have a presentation at the next board, yeah, the next board, meaning on the 24th, to update the board and the community on the IB process and the faculty involvement. We're in our fifth year coming up of our science research program, and we are also involved in STEM and applied technology programs at the high school, the community lunch and later start. We have not seen traffic issues. In fact, we received an email from a parent who was very, very upset, thought that we would have major problems, and now wrote and actually said, "I couldn't believe it. I had to drive my son to school, and it was easy as could be during that, during the early morning, the beginning of school." Also, the community lunch, we had a visit today from our second, second high school in the area. Carmel came today to visit our community lunch, and they were amazed by what they saw in terms of student voice, student choice, good choices that students are making for their use of that opportunity to make decisions about their lives, to learn to be adults during their lunchtime. And the work that was being done with teachers and the various things that happened during that time. We have our Mandarin Chinese program, which we started two years ago, going into grade nine this year, and so that will be part of our high school program. Those students who are seven and eight will have the opportunity to take Mandarin Chinese going forward. We are looking at adding math to the Twilight program. Twilight is the program to help students graduate. It's an as-needed program after school, and we are looking at, right now, we just have social studies and English and phys ed, and we choose those subjects, because those are the ones that students need to graduate, to have the Regis diploma. And math, we've never had in Twilight, and it looks like it's something that, as needed. So a teacher does not go to the Twilight unless there's a student who is particular need to graduate in that work. It's been a very good program. Seal of biliteracy, we just started that this year, for the first time this year, we will have a student graduating with a seal of biliteracy. It's a matter of applying for a student who has fluency in two languages, and we have one student this year who will be receiving, we believe, if she completes a very rigorous assessment process, receive that seal of biliteracy on her diploma, which is very helpful in going out into the world. We hope that more students, as we move forward, will be able to earn that seal. There's no financial commitment here, it's just the work, the work that's being done in order to apply and for our students. You know, some of the artwork our students do, some of this work is really remarkable. But the word imagine has a lot of connotations to us, and a great But the word "imagine" has a lot of connotations to us, and a great deal of what we have seen in the past number of years in our schools have been the result of the imagination of our teachers, our leaders in our schools, and we've been able to provide, we've been able to provide for that way of thinking imaginatively, creatively, innovatively, about where our students could be. So, for example, if you think about the IB program, if you think about the Mandarin program, these are programs which, you know, a lot of schools would, might not dare to do, and imagination is part of that and thinking that way. And this work is all done with ribbons that are, that are rolled together and create patterns, and very, very interesting work at our high school. I just want to mention the continuing successful science research program. This year, we had a winner just recently of the Regeneron, as a Regeneron competition as a semifinalist, and last year, we had another student who was extremely successful, achieving first place in the WestF program, then going on to the international. We also have eight students recently going to a state competition. Last year, we had 11 who were awarded distinction and medals at the WestF. We have really moved along with this program and have provided opportunities for success, again, showing and demonstrating to the community the capacity of our students and our staff, what we can achieve. And again, this is continuing, it is not new, we're just continuing. Now, when I say continuing, naturally, if you have more students, you may need to have, we're not talking about adding staff, but reallocating staff to be able to handle the numbers that we are seeing in the program. But right now, given our enrollments and so on, we're reallocating. We don't have to look at adding, but we are reallocating. Again, I have to share this photo. Sandy Intreary, Dr. Intreary, sent this to me not that long ago, and I think it gives that sense of the rainbow, the hope, the imagination, the innovation, the things that we're looking for.
And it points right to Dunkin' Donuts, so.
What's that?
It points right towards Dunkin' Donuts.
That's a pot of gold at the end of the rainbow.
You know, a budget can be a very sterile thing to look at, but it also has to be seen in a different way. It's symbolic. A budget is a symbol of what is happening in any institution or organization, and that's what a budget is. It's a symbol of that, and we want to continue that symbolism. Current middle school initiatives, they will be continued. These are things that we've had, but, you know, the Mandarin Chinese, again, will be offered to seventh grade, going on and so on. One of the things I want to mention is that we've had some very successful encores, digital citizenship and the Capstone Project for Research at the middle school. These are areas that are very relevant to students, particularly this digital citizenship area, where we see a lot of concern. We have a lot of concerns at the way students use their cellphones, their, all of their social media, and we try to teach them year by year, they take it each year, to help them understand what the impact is of using them unwisely. I love this bulletin board. It's, these are all famous people under those envelopes that have failed at one time in their life, and they've become extremely successful. It's a very compelling bulletin board that our students look at, and it sends this message of resilience. Resilience is another one of the aspects of the mental health framework that the state has portrayed, and we've been talking about this, if you remember, since the growth mindset a number of years ago. And so, this is a terrific bulletin board. I think Phyllis Conlon has this up, and the students do go and see, you know, which, who are these people who have failed and then have continued to be so successful. Current elementary school initiatives, one of them that I wanted to point out, the challenge programs, where we actually had a community curriculum night and talked about this issue of how do we develop more opportunities for students to be challenged, and that, Dr. Luft immediately started working with Margaret Podesta on how could we introduce a, oh, sorry, how could we introduce a program that would give students an opportunity to move ahead who, you know, were really interested in an area? And we're doing them now in both math and ELA, and one of the outcomes of that has been a wonderful project that Mick Coleman has created, the Mondrian Painting Project that is now being seen at the public library, and it's a way of teaching geometry through Piet Mondrian's paintings, which are geometric forms, and having students learn how to understand geometry through that process. I should mention the Makerspace that is very much alive, the nature programs, and we have teachers and our library aide, Mrs. Broas, working on that. That Makerspace is a labor of love, and a lot of great work is being done there. So, a lot of innovation and very, very conscious of how we map curriculum to the next generation's standards, and our teachers are very involved in that. This is something that I saw at the artwork at the elementary school that I loved. Each of these students developed, it's hard to see, I know in this photograph, but they created their face, but their face was made up of all the characteristics that they saw about themselves, that they wanted to portray, and they're really, they're really fascinating, very unique, very different. Again, this is a part of our school district that is represented by the budget. We support the arts. We support art programs. This is represented in our budget, what the students do. There's a connection, there's a linkage that sometimes we don't talk about. Here's just a photograph of what's going on in the public library here in town with the Mondrian math, and Mr. Coleman spent a great deal of time putting these, putting this together for the public to see what we do. So, what about areas of exploration, implementation, innovation? I mentioned the emotional learning and well-being area. We are working with someone, with a consultant right now, to help us to examine our program and to make recommendations to us about what are their needs that we have that need to be addressed and in terms of these guidelines, and presenting that to the board for recommendations. That will include focus groups, it will include observations in the school to look at our guidance program. Implementation of the District's Facilities Project. Of course, we have the project, and there's a great deal of work to be done. We passed the project. That was a wonderful achievement in the district, but now there's the process for state approval and construction timeline, and time is of the essence because time, doing things in a timely way ultimately saves money and brings the revenue in. Innovative ways to promote savings and sustainability in operations, maintenance, technology that support the educational program, looking for ways to save funds as we figure out how to manage our operations of the district. And Mrs. Spittle is very interested in this area, and has been working on ways to do that. Completion of the work connected with the Energy Performance Project, we've already seen benefits in terms of electricity, and I know we're also looking at an electricity contract that's very favorable for the district. So, these are the kinds of things that, when we talk about innovative ways to promote savings, we're looking in all areas. Some of the other factors that will impact budget decision-making, we have retirements, we have the negotiations of a contract with teachers, we have pension and health insurance benefits, and we, you know, we're still figuring out what the changes there will be. We have mandated services, I've mentioned before, and we have state aid calculations that we don't have final answers on. But these are all areas that impact. As far as enrollment goes, for the next year, it's pretty stable. We've actually had 11 students come in last week to start January, right after the holidays. And however, you know, as we move forward, we know that there are some decreases in enrollment. In the future years, and, you know, we're seeing that that's a possibility. However, you know, a lot can happen that changes that. We're seeing a number of houses that have been purchased recently in Putnam Valley, and we're seeing a growth, so we don't know. You know, it's an art and a science, demographics. I've sent you a demographic report that we have. We haven't completely reviewed it with the demographer. We'd like to have that person come to the board and talk about the report, but this is, you know, some of the information from that. And this was another community connection recently, a potluck for families of students learning languages, as we had yesterday. And this, I have a very exciting photograph, as Casey will remember. We, a group of the administrators went to the PTA fundraiser, the Army game, the hockey game, and it was a wonderful time that we all had as a leadership team, supporting the PTA, and Christina Casey was there too, and it was a very enjoyable evening. So, community connections and this sense of being together and family, this is what Putnam Valley stands for, and I think it's very important to see the budget in terms of just that, that it is a symbol of all the things that we want to do together. I wanted to show you also the budget timeline. And these, that will be posted, all of this is always posted on our website. So, a budget timeline, right now, we're in the process, this is the very first report, budget initiatives. The budget presentations begin on the 24th with elementary and middle school, and then February 7th with high school, technology, and athletics, and so forth. Each of the board meetings will have a different representative. These are always posted so that people will know ahead which area, if they're particularly interested in an area, when that area will be presented at a board meeting. Any questions?
Just one in terms of the presentations that are coming up. I know the principals do their building presentations, and that always includes demographics and sections and range of numbers. At the high school level especially, and I think maybe at the middle school level, could we have an exact breakdown of numbers in different classes? Like, for example, how many students are in every Spanish class in the middle school, or how many students are in every, because, you know, I've gotten feedback that some taxpayers feel that some of our class sizes are very, very low. So, instead of just, you know, transparency is our mission.
Right.
So, instead of just vaguely going, "The average is 24," I really would, can we have that breakdown of?
Absolutely.
The lowest is 12, the highest is 28.
And that is a very, that is something that we are looking at for next year. So, as I mentioned, when you have retirements, when you have changes, it's a very good time to take a look at, and then reallocation.
Right.
Remember reallocating the resources that you have.
Right.
So, yes, absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you. I don't want to ask them before they've been asked to present that, so if they can come These are very slow in this room.
Yes, it is.
Is it this room or is it today? Like, I clicked to open the next, and it's like.
It's taking a long time.
Taking a long time. Okay, our next, our final presentation for the evening, our next presentation, our second readings on a number of policies. So, Maureen, can you talk us through that?
They're as represented to you from the last meeting. First one is the Workplace Sexual Harassment Revision to Policy 0110.
Well, I was hoping Natalie would be here because I.
She couldn't be here this evening.
I haven't taken the time, like, and I know I should have, when we did the first reading, like, we didn't actually read through it, like, I just, usually, it highlights the stuff that's new or different, or is this all new based on the new?
No, the only difference here is the email address and some references. So, they give you an email address now where you can go for help.
Okay.
If you keep going down, it's like one sentence someplace, there's an email address where you have, that's it.
Oh, yeah.
The two blue lines are the only changes.
That's the only change. Even with all the new regs and stuff, we only had to add two, those two things?
Yes, those are the changes, those, if you look at the old version.
Sexual harassment.
Right there on top. Don't move, more. Right there, that D R H, it shows, it now gives the email addresses. So, in this one here, it's just giving email addresses where to get help.
So, we had this policy before, we're just amending it to add that.
Yes, we're making revisions to it, yes.
Okay.
Now, the next policy, the student sexual harassment policy for students, this is brand new. This whole policy is new.
Well, the whole policy is new. We didn't have this policy.
This is required now by the state, yes.
Okay.
It's basically what the state is requiring.
And how are the students advised of this? Like, how do students know this new policy?
Well, first of all, we have the Code of Conduct, that this will be added to our Code of Conduct, and that is taught every, that is reviewed every year at the community meetings early in the year. But if this policy is passed now, they would, this is why the community lunch is so helpful, because you can have an opportunity at the high school to go over this, and then you have community meetings at the middle school where you can go over them. So, there are opportunities to do that.
And our students still get a handbook?
Yes.
Do they get a handbook of Code of Conduct?
Digital.
Digital, okay.
Digital, okay.
You had to sign.
And what about elementary?
So, this would be part of the, this would be part of the handbook, I assume.
And what's happened now recently is that Natalie has gone into the faculty meetings to do trainings at the staff level.
Okay. So, even at the elementary school, the staff would be trained as to?
The staff is trained already, yes.
Even for the policy for students, because, I mean, those students are really too young to read the policy on their own.
Well, parents would be notified, too.
But are they? Are parents notified that it's posted?
Yes, for Code of Conduct in the beginning of the year.
Oh, I see. The parents would get it in the Code of Conduct.
So, this would have to be a separate.
Okay. I just want to be sure that if we're adding policy, we have so many policies.
Right.
Nobody ever actually reads them all, but they're important to have.
And to make people aware when something new has been added.
Right.
Uh-huh, I agree.
And I think the student piece will, is incorporated into an academic thread as well. So, through health and other classes where those type of discussions occur, there'll be connections made to this as well.
The policies, okay.
And the policies really, hopefully, represent best practices, which is what's being taught or discussed.
Can I, can I ask if, there's two Title IX officers we have, are those paid positions?
No.
No, and so, we can have more than two if necessary? Because I'm just wondering, you know, I know that from past observance of these kinds of policies, the more entry, entry points you have, the better it is for anyone who's subjected to something like that. And of course, we have two very good Title IX officers, but they both happen to be female, and I don't know if that would ever matter in a, if a person would ever hesitate. We don't want anyone to hesitate if there's a problem, these things. It's just, it's the Ms. Mistrada at the elementary school and Mrs. Dougherty at the main office. And it's just a thought that this or any other sexual harassment policy, I think, should have as many entry points as we can so that.
There is a line that designates the superintendent to name anyone else as a Title IX as well. There's all person designated by the superintendent of schools.
Just a thought to consider because we want as many entry points as necessary to make it a possibility for a person.
Well, and now that Natalie's not here, which she was until this year, I mean, maybe there needs to be one, especially at the high school. I don't, just something you could.
Perhaps a male.
Well, the policy, if I recall for me in the policy, the student is encouraged to bring up concerns to any trusted adult in the building who would then refer to the Title IX, you know, officer. So, it's not necessarily that the reporting can only be made to those two people, but those two people spearhead.
Have the official investigation.
Right. And I think you want to, I have. And I think you want to, I have no objection to appointing others, but you want to keep these people very expert.
Okay.
It's the same with DASSA, you know, and some of the other positions that are appointed, you know, homeless liaison from Kenny Vento, you want to keep the people who are doing it very, very current. So, I certainly have no problem with increasing the number, maybe having one per campus, you know, or whatever.
It says, however, in the procedure area that I'm just reading through, I need to check that.
It says you go to the Title IX officer, you can't go to anybody.
It says that they should, is encouraged to address the matter with any district Title IX officer, and of course, that's an asterisk, so, I, of course, we would hope that any entrusted, trusted person would direct them toward a Title IX officer, but, or toward any administrator, toward any teacher, they would direct them toward the Title IX officer, but it's just a thought that I had, that I know-
No, that's a good point, reading that, that's a good point.
As many entry points as possible to make these things easy.
So, how would you suggest?
Well, I happen to suggest a male, just, we live in a, in a diverse world, and I heard Mrs. Parmley say something about perhaps on different campuses, or, you know, one of the beach building, I'm just trying to follow my instincts about this kind of an issue, which can be very sensitive for people.
Is this the final reading?
Yeah, we'll add another person.
And the Title IX officer designation is actually part of the policy, or it's-
We appoint them some.
We appoint you.
We're going to appoint Jeanette tonight, I believe.
Tonight.
Okay. But part of the policy would be that they would be-
Appointed.
Like, if we approve the policy tonight, I guess is what I'm trying to say, and then added an additional-
I don't think that would change is the policy.
The policy, okay, that's my question.
The policy doesn't specify.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Okay, so that's fine.
Yes.
All right, then, I'm in complete agreement. Any other questions?
How about this one?
About this one.
And then the next one is Policy 9001, again, a new policy, sick leave utilization.
Okay.
This talks about if an employee is out for more than 10 days without real medical notes, what is going to happen?
Okay, so, I, I read this over when I was preparing for today. I'm a little concerned, because even though the number of sick days contractually has not increased or decreased, and I'm, you know, that I've been a huge proponent of not, not having staff be out, because there is no substitution for a staff member, you know, a teacher especially, but our aides and teaching assistants are also invaluable in terms of the learning process, and I'm, I'm the one who's always said, like, how can we make sure that the teachers are in the classroom where they belong? But to me, this policy, even though the number of sick days has not increased or decreased contractually, there is definitely a penalty for using two-thirds of your sick time. If you are not, the way I understand it, if you are not tenured, you could, it may lead to termination, and if you are tenured, it could give rise to disciplinary proceedings, which, to me, are more punitive than if you took my money away professionally. And while I agree with this, I, I'm concerned that it will raise issues in implementation, because, I mean, I do know people who, I know people that have been ill, or family members have been ill, and when we know about them and we help them through those times, we can be really supportive. But I also know that there are, we have staff members that are really private, and that don't always share those things, and we're less likely to be understanding of those days, because we don't kind of understand why they took them off. I don't know, I'm just, I'm just concerned that the punitive nature of this, unless it has been contractually arrived at, is problematic. I don't.
No, I have, I have the hair on the back of my neck raised about this a little bit as well, only because reading it, you're unclear what the contract says. You know, is, are you, you know, excess of 10 days, but then are you allowed 12, so you're saying if I'm following my contract-
Well, I was allowed 15.
Right.
So, this would be two-thirds of my, of what I was allowed, told that I had, and, you know, I'm not a one that believes you, that I think it's a privilege.
And it's used versus owned.
Right.
Sick leave is something available to use.
So, you know, like, I have a whole different view, but I'm concerned just because I think this is a, a kind of strange way to attack this, the problem that we have of excessive absence.
This is about documentation, though.
Right.
This is about documentation.
It says that if you have sick leave, if you're going to take sick leave, you should bring in medical something to show that you were sick.
But is that in our contract?
And then-
Yeah, well.
I mean, it is, if I recall, it is for consecutive sick time, not if you're sick one day-
No, that's right.
In October, I don't need to bring your doctors-
I just think maybe we're reading too far into it. I think really that last paragraph identifies, the rationale is, we, it's been a longstanding practice where the district calls in individuals who we may believe are using excess sick time, and maybe it's a way for us to bring in and raise awareness to ourselves, or how we can further support that person. It's not necessarily a punitive piece, but the district has certainly brought in individuals based upon patterns of absence, and said, is everything all right, is there anything we could do to help, is there something we need to know, we've noticed you've missed X number of days, right? There's lots of positives that can come out of that meeting as well, but I think some of the feedback we were receiving from one union in particular was, what, how did we reach to this, how did we decide who to call in and who not to call in? So, the purpose of this policy is really that last paragraph says is, well, rather than it seeming arbitrary, who gets called in and who doesn't, if we had a policy that just simply identifies those benchmarks that'll be used to decide who gets called in and who doesn't, that it removes that piece where there was this sense of arbitrary, why did so-and-so get called in and not so-and-so, or this person's worse than that person? And this is really just a way to sort of draw that line in the sand and say, it's not to say that there's any punitive piece to it, it's not to say that you're going to be fined, or fired, or disciplinary actions, doesn't say any of that. All it says is that it, this is really a marker that we're going to use to decide, bring you in and have that conversation. And I think it's important that we note that if we're not going to call in people, that we know why they're out, and if they have a sick family member, or if they've been dealing with illness themselves, and we have notes, we have rationale, it's not meant to be like a gotcha piece, it's just meant to clarify who we bring in and why we ask them to come in and just ask for more information.
Also, I think what we're grappling with here is, this isn't an evaluative policy, it's a monitoring policy. It says that, you know, we, we all are aware that our students suffer when there is significant absence. We know that the contracts provide for the protection, and they should, for our teachers and our CSEA members, to be able to ensure that they have their sick leave, and that it is, it's a legitimate aspect of being involved in a, in an association with those benefits. The other side of it is that we have, we have done, as Dr. Love has mentioned, we have already participated or worked on, implemented different types of monitoring, but we've never had a policy that sort of says this is something we believe is necessary, yet I know we've all talked about this, this issue of ensuring that, you know, we have an accountable policy, if you will, some way of assuring some type of accountability. It's very difficult, it's a very delicate issue, and the language of the contracts is different, in the teacher's contract, it's much more explicit as to, you know, patterns, for example, and being able to look at that. The CSEA contract does not have that, we know that, and ultimately, it may require further discussion with the union, which I think is, is a healthy thing to do. But it also, there are certain responsibilities that we have as a district to look at, at this issue, and to, in a compassionate way, in a caring way, in a sensitive way, to take a look at it, because we have had people say, "I'm entitled to my days, period." And, yes, people are entitled, for legitimate reasons, people are entitled.
They're entitled to, they have days available to use-
Exactly.
In the event that they are ill.
And that's what it, and that's all we're saying, and we acknowledge that. And we have, we have rarely, I mean, the number of people who we've talked to has been actually quite-
And it's, it's different than vacation time, we couldn't tell a teacher, "You have to work Christmas vacation."
No, exactly.
They're entitled, they're entitled, that's, we, you know, we couldn't say, "You have to work Christmas vacation." Vacation time, where you can all, we specify 180 workdays, that it's, that's the right or the entitlement, is that you own, you have that vacation time, is entitled to you. Sick time is available to you to use in the event-
Legitimate.
That you are ill.
And, and, there are so few-
You don't own your sick time, you have them available to you.
That, where this is so few.
You own your vacation time.
There are so few where these issues come up, but when it does come up, a policy gives you sort of the imprimatur of this, of the Board of Education, to at least take a look at these things. Right now, we don't have that, we don't have a policy. It's been done through administration, if you will.
I'm just stuck on, I guess, the implementation a little bit. You know, I understand, I absolutely understand that it's to establish criteria, but we don't have in our contract, and we don't require a doctor's note after one day illness.
No.
So, if you're sick once a month, you, how, you know, that can move you to 10 days, because there's 10 months of the school year. But we don't require a doctor's note for being sick once a month.
But this gives the opportunity to ask the-
So, if we play that out, and that individual's been sick one day for 10 consecutive months, and-
It's June, anyway.
And gets called in to have a meeting, and says, like, "I'm really sorry, this isn't my usual pattern, I've been unusually sick this year, and I hope to be better soon." I mean, it's, in no way does the policy infringe upon contractual rights or benefits, it's really only meant to identify a target that'll be used to have those discussions, because we've sort of, finger pointing has happened in term, before, "Why me and not this person?" And since we had no policy to refer back to, there's no contractual language that says anything about us calling in individuals and speaking to them, this policy is meant to fill that void, so it doesn't do anything to the contractual language, but what it does, it establishes a policy for when and why we would invite individuals in to discuss. But there's no, "If we don't like your reason, we're going to charge you back 40 days," like, it doesn't say anything like that, it's just-
I think the other, the other thing that we need to make clear is that this policy was reviewed and actually suggested by our attorney as being lawful, and-
Well, I understand that it's lawful, I just, I don't know, maybe because it, my whole focus is the importance of our staff being in school with children-
Right.
As much as possible. And this, to me, just seems negative, I don't know how else to describe it, except that it just seems, I don't, I don't, I don't see that this says that I value my employees, and it also doesn't say that everybody who has 10 or more is going to be, I mean, does that mean anybody that has 10 is going to, everybody that has 10 is going to be called in at 10, at 11? Like, I'm not su, I don't know.
Technically, yes.
And I hate, and I hate that I'm doing this, because, you know, this is my bone of contention, is not having people in school. Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, what, what happens is, we generate a list mid-year and the end of the year, again, this process is already, practice is already happening, we're just trying to make a practice into a policy to reflect, or establish a policy to reflect the practice that's already happening. So, in December, and at the end of the school year, we run the entire school district, every employee of the school district, their attendance, and the number of, and the number of days they've been out. But then it's up to their director ports, whether it be a principal, or a director or someone to go through and say, like, "Well, so-and-so had a baby, and they've been out 40 days," right? We're not going to call them in and say, "Can you explain to us why you've been out?" Right? So, we're not, we cross them off, we're not going to use them. But what it's used to do is to identify patterns that maybe otherwise we didn't realize were there. And those individuals, again, are already being called in, this policy is just cementing the rationale behind why, and what was the target that was reached to call them in. But again, if I know so-and-so has a sick child, and they missed two weeks, we're just going to ignore that person, we're not going to call that person in and say, "Oh, can you explain to us why you were out two weeks?" I know that Johnny was sick, but, so, it's really only meant to, we're going to eliminate the people that we know why, and, and just simply call on the individuals that maybe I didn't realize that so-and-so was out one day a week for 10 months throughout the school year, sick, plus they missed 12 more days for professional development, and took three personal days, and the next thing you know, we're up to 25% of the instructional days where that individual was in their classroom. A policy like this helps us keep track of individuals like that.
I do see that the policy, the way policies are written, it's very neutral, it is not, you know, it's possible that we should have a paragraph at the, at the top of this policy that says that we appreciate the-
We value the importance of our education, of our staff.
And evaluate the importance of teachers and, and staff members in the classroom with students, and to acknowledge that.
Okay, but if I, if I look at the first, I, if I look at the first paragraph that says, "An employee's use of sick leave in excess of 10 days shall be considered excessive." And I go down to the next to the last paragraph, "With respect to tenure to permanent employees' use of sick leave, sick leave in excess of the standard set forth above, which is 10 days-"
But you got to read that second sentence.
"-may give rise to disciplinary proceedings."
No, no, the second sentence of the first paragraph.
Absence due to illness with proper medical documentation, but sometimes-
Will be excluded.
So, it doesn't count? So, if somebody was sick with strep throat, right?
And that can be different, but, you know, I, I, I'm just, in reading it, it makes me uncomfortable, that's, I don't know, I just have to say.
No, I understand that. I, I'm going to speak very bluntly in that we want our employees to stay home if they're sick. I don't want you to come in with the flu, I don't need you to get the rest of the, this school, and I'm not in any way saying, "Come in if you're sick," or "Come in if your child is sick." But I also don't want it to be easy to use sick time as an additional personal time. I don't want it to be easy to be out of the classroom. I want people to say, you know, "Have I been sick a lot lately? Have I been out, has this been a bad, you know, for example, when my mother-in-law was very ill and passing away, I was very careful about other time, I wasn't going to use a personal day there, because I was out a lot, you know, and so, it's part of my planning of my own time." That's what we want. We, I believe we want a policy that values attendance, and doesn't make it easy to not be in front of our students. Maybe adding a line about the purpose for the policy, or the value of our, of our districts, and how important it is that staff be in, in the building, will, Barbara, soften your bad, bad taste in your mouth?
You know, maybe it's an opportunity to work on the policy, you know, and collaborate, and figure out a- and figure out a way that we can, um... Because this has been something I know the board has been concerned about, that, that we are all concerned about when we look at attendance. And by the way, not just our district. I have emails from colleagues in other districts. Other places are looking at this in terms of, "What do you do?" And, you know, we have been questioned with regard to the contractual rights of the CSEA with this, with regard to this project, uh, policy. And I, well, I'm sympathetic to that, to those contractuals, the contractual statements about the days that are provided. There is also that other side, which is what, how can a board assert that it is significant to them? That teachers and our staff members in general are available to students the maximum amount of time?
Well, and I, I know that, I mean, I've watched, you know, the secretaries in the office trying to find coverage for classes, and, and that's just covering them so the children aren't alone. That's not even instructional, and it, it makes me crazy.
Well, it is, it's very difficult.
And I think 10 days out is excessive. I'd like the contracts changed, so that they don't have so, so many, with the ability to, if somebody's truly ill, to give them that time, you know, through sick banks and whatever. I don't know, you know, but if, if our goal is to say that 10 days is excessive, then, then I, I don't, that, I, whatever. I'll leave it for now.
Can I, can I, can I just ask you, because I'm listening to this conversation, you mentioned about a child being in the hospital, for instance, or I'll throw in a, a spouse being on hospice or something. Is that an excusable absence due to illness? Or did it has, does have to be the person here? Or how do we handle that? What, what does it say about those things? Because it's actually not the person being ill, correct? So...
Family members.
But that's only five days, correct? You only have five of those family illness days, correct?
No.
No, it's all because of the...
That's grievance.
I don't have that wording in front of me.
I don't have the word, it's more than...
But, uh, so I'm just wondering, since we're talking about these things, about, people have mentioned about a, perhaps a child being in the hospital, or I'm mentioning a, a spouse or somebody being critically ill, does that count toward this 10-day count? I would just bring that up as another factor. I don't know how that's handled, respectfully.
I don't think the contract breaks down...
It doesn't break down.
No, I don't think it breaks. It just gets subtracted from the overall number, whether it's family sick or personal sick.
Again, I don't, I don't see this policy as being draconian. It is kind of the, the flag of, "If this is unexcused, we have no doctor's note, you've been out a lot." Essentially is...
Let's have a conversation.
It's, it triggers a conversation. And if somebody is, um... Is, is an untenured teacher, for exam, for example, you have to take attendance into consideration. If, if that's, you know, if, if you have no documentation of why you're out, you know, a certain amount of time, you have to take that as possibly a pattern. You have to think about that when you have to make million-dollar decisions about them being tenured. So I, I, I don't think that this is draconian in any way. I don't think this says you're automatically, you're not going triple secret probation or anything. You were really, in practicality, I think it's talking about having that conversation.
But perhaps we, you know, it may be looking at that, some additional language. And Barbara, maybe you want to think about what that would, how that would be.
Okay.
And then maybe it could be tabled for this evening, and brought back at another, at another time.
I do also think that we should probably find out what the reference to the Purb regulation is. I mean, obviously, there's something there.
Yes, and the, the Purb regulation, the Purb section means that when these issues have come to Purb, that Purb has upheld such policies.
Yeah, I, just in the interest of time, and we spend a lot of time on that, I would say, are we all, as board member, in agreement with, kind of sitting on it, tabling it for today? Natalie, who, or even resource, um...
Maybe I'll sit down with Natalie, and...
That's a good idea.
And then we, put it back on the agenda, Maureen, for our next meeting.
Tap, tap, table the whole motion, or just table that one piece?
This one policy.
Right. So the consent item, number five, will be modified to exclude this 9,000.
This policy, uh, 9, 0, 0, 1. But we'll include the other two.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. We don't have student representative reports. PTA, PTSA, are you here for that, with that hat on?
Over the wires.
Hi, good evening. I'm Christina Casey, I'm the corresponding secretary for the PTA. I have a lot of information for you tonight. First, we want to welcome everybody back to school and wish all of our PTA and Putnam Valley families a Happy New Year. Right before the holiday break, we had our annual holiday reads event. It was a great turnout, and we had many older middle school and high schooler students helping at the craft tables. We had a performance by Ms. Kraus's band, Students. So a huge thank you to all that attended, our volunteers. Ms. Parmley was one of our guest readers, so thank you for that as well, and your support. And also to Santa, who made his appearance that night. We had a few arts and education events recently. On December 7th, we had author Kathy Price visit our kindergarteners. And on January 7th, we had Martin Luther King Jr.'s Amazing Grace performance for our kindergarteners. We actually, right now, tonight, have a 4th grade spirit committee meeting at the elementary school, and they help plan our 4th grade events, such as the Moving Up Ceremony and the, um, 4th grade T-shirts. We have a Student of the Month breakfast at the middle school on Friday, January 18th, to celebrate the December recipients. Congratulations for all their hard work. We have a 1st and 2nd grade Bingo for Books event on Friday, January 18th, from 6:30 to 7:30 at the elementary school cafeteria. It's $5 for PTA members and $10 for non-PTA members. You can purchase tickets through your PTA account or at the night of the event. Snacks will be provided, and there's going to be a book swap. So if you bring your old books that you want to have, "Find a New Home with a New Family." Uh, we're having our Second Annual Pocketbook Bingo fundraiser on Saturday, February 23rd, from 6:30 to 9:30 at the German American Club. The doors open at 5:30 to preview the bags and the raffles. Last year, we had a great turnout, so we're bringing back this event, and we're looking forward to this year's. Tickets will be $35 a person if you purchase in advance, and $40 per person at the door. Admission will include three bingo cards, which includes a total of 10 games each, one dabber, and one door prize raffle ticket. PTA members will receive an extra door prize raffle ticket. We'll have coffee and dessert, and there's a cash bar. But feel free to bring your own non-alcoholic drinks and appetizers to share with your table. We'll also have available for purchase more raffle tickets for our donated prizes from local vendors and independent consultants, a 50/50 raffle, and additional bingo cards for $5 each, or four for 20. You have to be 18 or older to play, and space is limited, so we're encouraging you to purchase your tickets early. We're also looking for volunteers for this event. Those who are interested in volunteering should contact Brandy at B-R-A-N-D-I-G-I-R-L-84@msn.com, or at our website, info@putnamvalleypta.org. All volunteers are encouraged to play along, and will receive five free raffle tickets. And we're also looking for goods or services donated from local businesses or independent consultants in the community. Your donations will be raffled after the, during the event, and all donors will be recognized in the event program, on display at the event, as well as on our Facebook page and website. If you're interested in donating, please email Teresa at T-E-R-E-S-S-999@gmail.com, or at our email address, info@putnamvalleypta.org. Include your name, your business name, contact info, and donation. And donations need to be dropped off or picked up by February 10th. The PTA is also sponsoring a spelling bee for our 3rd and 4th graders. Students who are interested in participating should sign up with their teacher. Some important dates to be aware of are a parent meeting on March 12th, a student orientation on March 26th, and this is when students would receive the list of words to study. April 25th will be the semifinals, and May 13th will be the finals. And we have our Three For Me program running at the elementary school on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, from 9:15 to 11:00 a.m. You could also attend at other times, just let us know ahead of time. The Three For Me encourages members to volunteer three hours of their time over the course of the year to support our elementary school teachers with tasks such as copying and assembling projects. And coffee and snacks are provided for our volunteers. To volunteer for any of the events mentioned tonight, or volunteer for upcoming events, you can sign up through your PTA account at www.putnamvalleypta.org, or email us at info@putnamvalleypta.org, and like our Facebook page for the rest of our events and more information. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, thank you very much. Dr. Lupt, do you have a curriculum report for us?
Sure, a quick one. Dr. Wells stole most of it during her presentation. I wanted to formally welcome Dr. Kern Wohica again to our middle school. It's been very impressive to see him already working with our students, and I believe our students have informally already given him a nickname, Dr. Mo, which as far as middle school nicknames go, isn't half-bad. So, we look forward to seeing his continued work at the middle school. I've been spending a lot of time in the STEM room here at the high school. They continue to make improvements, and I want to thank our buildings and ground staff who did a tremendous amount of work in the room over Christmas break, building more storage, and, um, putting some new safety measures in place. And I know that our robotics team is about to begin work, or has just begun work, on their robot for the next competition. We have an IB visitation team scheduled to visit the high school in February, and they'll be looking, um, in our classrooms. They'll be interviewing and holding focus groups as they make their final decision on our application for the IB program. We will be contracting with a guidance consultant who will come in and help us make sure that we're aligned to the new standards and guidance in terms of, um, both serving the elementary school, as well as making sure we have a well-balanced guidance department, which means not strictly, not, not, making sure that we're not overly focused on technical and structural issues, but that those guidance counselors are also involved in social, emotional aspects, as well as academic pieces. I know that, uh, students participated in the writing of One Act Plays, and the students received awards. At an award ceremony here in the high school, so I wanted just to mention that. Our facilities project update. We've recently had a meeting with our architects, and we've interviewed construction management firms. I believe by next board meeting, we'll have a construction management firm ready to go, and it's, it's getting really exciting with timelines flying around, and, and we just sent, or we will be sending out an email to the community asking for community members who are interested in participating on our facilities advisory committee. So that's sort of the next phase of this. There was a planning committee, there was an implementation committee, and now we have this advisory committee. So this advisory committee will serve many purposes throughout the course of the project. And our information session, I believe, is scheduled on the 31st for, just sort of information for anyone interested. We've had, again, Dr. Wells already mentioned, we've had numerous schools come to visit, not just to see the Mandarin program, but also to see the community lunch and the block scheduling. I did have a chance to attend Mr. Coleman's exhibit at the Putnam Valley Library, and it was great to see, it was beautiful to see all the students' work displayed there, and he took us through drawing our own. And I also wanted to congratulate Dora. I know there's a tremendous amount of work that went into her project, and I was glad to see that she was recognized for that. That's it, thanks.
Just want to comment on the guidance consultant. I know that the new regulations include having a district-wide guidance plan. I don't think we've seen that as a board yet. Is that part of what we're using the consultant to develop?
Yeah, so we, we had an old plan. We actually have been working on updating the old plan. Some of our guidance counselors have been leading that initiative, along with Ms. Dordie and Dr. Wells. But this person will certainly see that plan, but they're looking more sort of at the entire program, not necessarily just the plan itself.
They'll be going into class, into, uh, focus, they'll have focus groups. They'll be looking to see what's being done in classrooms, and the responsibilities and rules.
Jeremy, do you have any idea how long the Mondrian exhibit is going to be at the library?
Couple of weeks.
Yeah, I believe a couple of weeks.
So i- if anybody is out there watching, stop by the library, and, and if you, sometimes the lights are off. They'll turn the lights on for you. They're very excited, the people in the library, about the showing. There's all kinds of really cool information about the artist, about the math involved in, and the geometry involved. So it's really interesting. So I really do encourage people to, to, you know, stop by the library and have a look.
Okay. Did you leave anything for Dr. Wells to talk about?
Not much. Yeah, just a couple of things, just to put on your calendar, because this year, we're going to have, I, I was, you know, managed to get to the concert last night, which was absolutely amazing. And there was a great piece on World War I music, and the Jazz project. Our students have their, again, student voice, student creation. Our students have their own jazz band that they've created. There are four of them, and they did a Charlie Parker piece that was extensive, very, very complex, and beautifully done. So a great deal from that concert. But I also wanted to say that the, the Great Works Concert by our high school band and chorus together will feature the work of Leonard Bernstein this, this year. And the date is February 13th. This is not to be missed. It's going to be really remarkable. And also, we have our One Act Plays that will be produced in this library, in the performance space, on February 14th. So I just wanted to mention that.
Valentine's date.
It's a nice Valentine's, a present. Okay. I'd like to open up for poll contribution on any of the listed agenda items. You're the public, so... Don't all queue up at once.
I'm wearing my CSEA hat tonight.
Okay.
Liz Bros, president of the CSEA. And I just want to let the board know that the CSEA does feel that there's a conflict with their contract. Our, while we, let me first say, personally, I can very much appreciate the need to control absentism. I don't think I've ever shown the district that I don't care about the kids, or don't have a great work ethic. But things, there's a proper way to do things, I think. And there's a level of respect in, in dealing with people that I think is being missed here. Our contract is different from the teacher's contract, and it's, we have 15 sick days annually after a year of employment. And we only have to provide a doctor's note after the third consecutive sick day. There are definitely circumstances that you can imagine, and frankly, they don't matter for this argument, but I could have a personal procedure. I could have kids that are sick for a variety of reasons on a regular basis, mental health, that add up to more than 10. And when you call me in, you're not entitled to that information right now, as far as I'm concerned. I don't say that I'm not willing to sit down at a table and give you that information, or talk to you about how we can work something out. But to do this unilaterally, and not negotiate terms that are traditionally negotiated for contract terms, it rubs me the wrong way. It doesn't strike me as being open and honest. And that's something I don't like. So I'm happy, again, the right time, the right place to sit down and negotiate these terms. I appreciate the goal, very much so. I agree with you, Ms. Parmley. I, I see problems. It's not that I'm not seeing that, or, or willing to work with everybody. But going about it the right way has enormous value. CSEA personnel work here, we live here, our children go to school here. We are your community. So I've been told by Dr. Wells, by Natalie Dougherty, that there's no problem with CSEA absentism. If there is a problem elsewhere, and that's working fine, I'd ask that you table this until we can negotiate it at the proper time, so.
Thank you very much. Okay. Moving on to new business. Mr. Ferraro, will you start us off with number one?
Resolved on recommendation, Superintendent Schools to appoint Deborah Verdi to a 12-week-long substitute teacher, uh, sorry, uh, as a 12-week-long substitute teacher at the elementary school effective March 11th, 2019 through June 3rd, 2019, or sooner at the discretion of the Board of Education. The substitute salary rate of $175 per day. Ms. Verdi holds nursery, K and 1 through 6 certifications.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number two.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to amend the appointment of Daniela Sinapi, a leave replacement teacher at the elementary school, originally approved at work session slash business meeting of September 6th, 2018, to be effective through June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number three.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to amend the start date of the appointment of Carolyn Alfano, approved at the December 13th, 2018 meeting of the board to a probationary appointment as a bus driver effective January 14th, 2019, with a minimum probationary period of eight weeks, March 10th, 2019, and a maximum of 52 weeks, January 13th, 2020, at the Transportation Department on Step 5 of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number four.
Resolved to appoint Barbara Parmley as the NYES School Boards Association as the district's advocacy liaison.
Second.
Questions or comments? Good luck, Barbara. All in favor?
Aye.
Does anybody want to go with me, February 10th? Come on, I don't want to drive up to Albany by myself. It's a Sunday. We're only going up for the day.
I'll let you.
Think about it.
I'm watching you here.
If it's only for the day.
Number five.
Resolved on recommendation of Superintendent Schools to accept the resignation of Connie Nugent, a one-to-one registered nurse from the district effective January 12th, 2019, as per document number 9919 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting, and approve Ms. Nugent as, in addition to the 2018-19 substitute listing.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number six.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Patricia Recupio to a probationary appointment as a school monitor effective January 11th, 2019, with a minimum probationary period of eight weeks, March 8th, 2019, and a maximum of 52 weeks, January 10th, 2020, at the elementary school on Step 1 of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number seven.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Jeanette Mastretta as a Title VI, Title VII and Title IX officer for the district at no additional compensation. Ms. Mastretta is appointed to these roles in addition to Ms. Natalie Dougherty, the Assistant Superintendent for PPS and Human Resources, who has been previously appointed.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think they taught you Roman numerals in school.
Nicely done, Ms. Parmley. Number eight.
Resolved on recommendation of Superintendent Schools to appoint the high school principal, Sandra, Sandra Entieri, middle school principal Travis McCarthy, and elementary school principal Margaret Podesta as Title IX complaint investigators with no additional compensation.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number nine.
Resolved on the recommendation of Superintendent Schools to accept proposals as per the reference document numbers, documents attached to the official minutes of this meeting from the following vendors for nursing services to the district, in the district. Maxim Healthcare Services Document Number 9619, Access Therapies Document Number 9719, and EDU Healthcare Document Number 9819.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda.
Resolved to approve consent agenda items 2 through 14 as presented to the board at this meeting.
With exception, with, with the exception of.
With the exception of number.
Of a modification.
With modification.
Of number five.
To exclude.
Policy 9,001.
To exclude.
Policy 9,001.
Policy.
Exclude the second reading.
9,001, sick leave utilization, second reading.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We're accepting a very generous donation, the amount of $1,000 from Mrs. Kleinegris for her husband's scholarship, Mr. John Kleinegris Scholarship. So on behalf of the whole school community, we thank the Kleinegris family and especially Mrs. Kleinegris for this. We're approving curriculum work for a teacher who works, um, with some of our disadvantaged children. We're, um, proposing the world language speaking examinations, which you heard a little bit about earlier today. So this one student's going to show that, uh, is able to speak two languages. We're approving an increase in, um, some hours for a school monitor because of needs of a special student. We're approving the second reading of the two policies on sexual harassment in the workplace that you heard, uh, policy 0110 and 0111. We're revising the salary range for a substitute because of the new minimum wage policy. We're mending the coach's salary for the boys' basketball coach. We originally calculated it incorrectly and we're correcting that. We're approving 2.5 days without pay for a staff member. And we have a whole bunch of sports teams that we merge with other schools. So our golf team is with Peace Skill, our modified wrestling team is with Garrison and Haldane, our varsity wrestling team is with Haldane, our varsity girls' swimming team is with Lakeland, our varsity's boy's swimming team is with Lakeland, our varsity indoor track team is with Haldane, our hockey team plays with Lakeland, Haldane and Henrik Hudson. Our modified hockey team is with Lakeland and our varsity girls' gymnastics team is with Lakeland. We're approving additions to the substitute list. We're approving a health and welfare contract for five of our students who go to non-public schools in the Austin School District, so Austin supplies medical coverage for them. We're approving postseason stipends for the cross-country assistant coach, for the varsity cross-country coach, for the varsity cheerleading coach, for the varsity football coach, the assistant varsity football coach, the girls' varsity swimming team, the varsity volleyball team and the assistant varsity volleyball team coach. These teams went on to other activities after the season ended, of course, they did so well. We're approving four additional hours for our behavioral specialists. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to open it up to public contribution on any topic. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the work session business meeting of January 10th, 2019.
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.